Before we start our meeting, Hi Lama, could you please offer pu'le for us?
Aloha Chair, aloha trustees, aloha Oha'ana, e ho'ama'ukaku. E kiala i kamakualaniki iki lo'oko ki'aulo'oko. E ho'ima'ko ka'upu e Oha'ana i'akoko me'ne'i imoko alo. Ke ho'ana ni'ho'maika i'mili lanihosana kune'ima'ko ya'oe. Oya'iku no'ha'a'a ne'iko makopo ke ho'ana ni'amilia ni'aka'ne'ima'ko ya'oe. Ke'ko ma'ala ma'ke ia'halawai' o na'kahuwai'vai'oke ke'e nakule'a na'hava'i. Me'ko makohoa, Dr. Randy Fong i'akoko me'ne'i me'makoo ke'iala noku pono'kana e'awamone'i. Imo'ava'i ho'ana imo'ama'ko ke'aku'a. Na'ane'ho'maika i kamakohalawai' apau kamakopapahana ho'ia'ia'ama'ko komako wahi kupono. Ma'ka inokauki ki'i vee'ue'ue' Yesu Kristo ka'ule'au pu'le, amene.
Thank you, thank you, Hi Lama. I would like to call today's Board of Trustees meeting to order. That the record reflected is Tuesday, August 27, 2024. And the time is 10:04 a.m. Lehu'a, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Ail.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha ma'ukaku.
Trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria.
Ail.
Trustee Souza.
Ail.
Trustee Trask.
Present.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Present.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Present.
You have seven trustees present, we have quorum.
Mahalo. Aloha kakou, welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting. This meeting can be viewed and observed via livestream on Oha's website at www.oha.org/livestream. Joining us today, we have our CEO Kapo'hana Stacy Ferreira. I would like to ask Stacy to introduce any administrative staff joining us today.
Mahalo Chair, good morning trustees. Today, we have joining from the administration is Chief Operating Officer Kehau'pu'u, Interim Corporation Counsel Everett Ota, Interim Senior Legal Counsel Nichi Ozawa, Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs, Hi Lama Farden, Director of Education and Culture-Based Learning, Anuhea Awu'chan, IT Systems Engineer and Administrator Daniel Santos, and Arlene Aginoto. Mahalo.
Thank you. Today on our agenda, we have a presentation on Cultural Heritage Education and Community Exchange Charter and Agreement between Rai Te'a Municipalities, French Polynesia, and the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Presentation by Dr. Randy Camuela Fong, Executive Culture Officer from the Kamehameha Schools. Lehu'a, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item?
No one is signed up to speak on this item.
At this time, we'd like to welcome Randy, mahalo nu'vi for joining us today.
Ela hanu'hanu ke'ia' ahe'poma'ika inho'i. E kapapakahuwai'vai'oa Oha', na'ala ka'i. Chair Hulu Lindsey, Oha'ana Stacy Ferreira. Hi Lama, Senior Director of Cultural Affairs, amena lima ana'apau'oa. Wa'halauanui ke'ia'kono'ana'i'au e kipaya'oko ma'ka halene'i na'ala ma'kukui. Wa'make'make'vali'au e'ha'avi'ika iki'alahanui o na'kula'oka Kamehameha. E kamakoo CEO o Jack Wong. Ame'ana me'ya ekolu'ora'i'atea o ye'ho'i. O Thomas Motam o Taputapua'ata'oa. O tavana Matahi Brotherson o U'turoa ame tavana Siro Titu'anui o Tumara. Ano'aila ya'oko pakahi'a pa'au'oa i'akalahanui aloha kakahi'a kakaku.
Aloha.
What an honor it is to present here to our Oha family. And this morning, I'd just like to share a little bit about some very exciting things that are happening in the Pacific in the way of cultural, educational partnerships. And so I thought I'd just present some background about Rai'atea and to show some examples of some of the wonderful partnerships that are actually happening at this time with Kamehameha Schools and parts of French Polynesia. So if I may, if I could just start by explaining that we have what's called the Aha' Moana Nui'a Ke'a Pacific Consortium. We started in 2018, and it's really a network, indigenous network, between Kamehameha Schools and various parties throughout the Pacific. For example, we have 12 partnerships that are in the regions of French Polynesia, including Tahiti and Rai'atea, in Rapanui, in Aultearoa of course, but also in Alaska, the Klinkit and Haida. And we're also very excited about our Micronesian partnerships, Sarawak, Chuk, Yap, and of course, our Taiwan partnerships that are very, very exciting. And I think we saw some of the unity of the Pacific at the recent Festival of Pacific Arts, for which we are so grateful for Oha's leadership. And so I think I'll just share, if I might, just this. It's a PowerPoint in a PDF form. And I want to just start, if I may, by just introducing Kiala i'Kahiki. Needs no introduction, that's familiar to all of us, the pathway to Tahiti. And... But we remind ourselves that there is a highway. There's a highway that was traversed frequently with skill and precision between hava'i and the region we now call French Polynesia. And so Kahiki Tahiti becomes a very, very general reference to homelands that are actually, there are many. But we're reminded that we call it a highway because we are convinced, we know that the way in which our people traversed the Pacific, that there are all these lanes and freeways and on-ramps and off-ramps that were accessed, you know, different times of year in different ways, with different technologies. And that this is the ingenuity of our ancestors. And so you can see there's the equator, the band right there, that has many different names. Sometimes we call it Kahopu'kane, the Diaphragm of Kane, and the Kapiko'oka'onoa, right, the center of the earth. And then also this ka'e, this kind of band that reflects calm, the doldrums. And here's what our navigators today tell us. They say that when they're, whether it's a Hokule'a or hiki'ana'lia, that you know, you apply all of this knowledge and know-how, and then at some point, you give it over, right, to this ancestral guidance that sort of takes you into its hands and takes you where it wants you to go. And very naturally, the canoes, if I can just point out, along this highway, almost always end up in this region of the Tuamatu. And so we're just gonna get a close-up of the Tuamatu. And while we won't get into too much detail, it's important because this is where the canoes always end up, in this little pocket. And so it shouldn't be surprising to us that one of the main islands in this cluster is also called hava'i. And it should not surprise us that we would find way over here, at this little arrow in Apuka, that there would be ads that are traced back directly to the Kaholave quarry. So all this lets us know that there was this purposeful going back and forth. We knew how we did it, and that the people, our ancestors, our elders who we left when we came up to Hawaii were waiting for us to come back and bring treasures from Hawaii back down to Tahiti. So this is kind of the, we focus on this as sort of the off-ramp, if you will, we can imagine a highway, right? And just here, to this side, is Tahiti and Rai'atea. And this is gonna be the focus of our presentation today and the background for proposal for an Oha partnership. So what's on the other side, the hava'i side of that highway? The on-ramp, Kaholave, one of many on-ramps, and named Kiala i'Kahiki for that reason. And so we have to use our imagination. Could be that there's a fleet of va'aa sort of lining up, preparing for a journey. And they have to wait for the right time because there's gonna be a lot of traffic on that on-ramp. Wait for the right time of year, right conditions. And then when it's ready, you go. And you can sort of imagine them sort of leaving from Kaholave. Here's an example of the Tahitian canoe Fa'afa'ite. When they traveled up the Kiala i'Kahiki highway, they arrived in Kaholave. They absolutely wanted to affirm that this was an off-ramp of that highway. And it's a story that's been told for centuries, maybe 12th century, back to this very classic e'ha'ava'i poem, Mele. That is really clear, the Hawaii is an island, it's a man, a child of Tahiti. And we sing the glory of this melody even today, even though it's very, very old. So just by comparison, I just wanted to take your attention over here ever so briefly. So this is Sarawak, right, this is the home of Maupia'i'uk. And it kind of just helps remind us that this ingenuity in the Pacific, you know, it's not divided by maps that are conceived today, right? If we had a chance to redo a map in indigenous terms, it would be amazing, and it might be not recognizable if we use our Western conventions all the time. So here we are in Tahiti, I'm sure many of us here have been to Tahiti or have plans to go or would like to go. It's not unusual that we would, it's kind of interesting that you would look at the shape of Tahiti and go, this kind of looks like an inverted Maui. Kind of, kind of very much so, it looks like one, right? And that we would have a district called Kahikenu'i on Maui. These are not coincidences, right? So generally, a pape'ete, that's the capital, and all the governance happens here. And the airports are va'aa. And all of these are ancestral names. We have Olohena on kaua'i, for example. Here is a place called Tau'tira, you might have heard that name, but this is Hokule'a's home in Tahiti. That community still embraces hava'i through its love and service to va'aa Hokule'a. So this is the, I guess you could say the main island, most recently with the Olympics, Ti'ahu'po'chupu, Ti'au'po'chupu is the site of that famous surfing spot. And so we need to remind ourselves that there was purposeful communication between the of the Ian leadership of hava'i and the leadership of Tahiti. Purposeful, very direct correspondences. All this slide does is give us some counterparts, right, of Kamehameha i'Kahi and Pumare the First, roughly contemporaries, right? Then we have Bernice Poahii Bishop, and we have Aymata Pumare the Fourth. She had a 50-year reign. And actually, she's not really as contemporary with Poahii. She's more contemporary with Kina'ua. And but it just lets you know that these folks were in correspondence with each other on purpose, on purpose. And finally, we end up at Rai'atea, which is really two islands, Rai'atea is one island, Taha'aa, and they share the same lagoon. And it's important to know that the traditional name for Rai'atea is hava'i. This is not, and this is not by chance. This is purposefully done, naming things as like breadcrumbs as you land, right? And you settle, and that's on purpose. So is Taha'aa named Uporu on purpose. Right? Every time we hear those names, we think they're, why did they rename them? And how natural it is to reconnect with them. So this would be the place where we're receiving proposals from the leadership of Rai'atea to engage in partnerships, cultural partnerships. I'll just say, the three mayors that are reaching out to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and to Kamehameha Schools is one is Thomas Motam of Taputapua'ata'oa. That's in this district here, it's the largest district. Not in Rai'atea, I believe it's the largest district in French Polynesia that he's the mayor of. And then this area here, which is U'turoa, like the main, the capital of the island, that mayor is also reaching out, and their colleague Siro Titu'anui of Tumara. So the combination of those three mayors, they have reached out with Rai'atea hospitality. Whenever Hokule'a or any canoe goes into the region of Taputapua'ata'oa, which is a religious site, right? It's really considered to be like a mecca of navigation. And we know for a fact that there were alliances and almost like a college, if you will, of navigational knowledge focused in this area. We enter through this pass right here called Te'abamo'a. And there's a long history of things that happen when you don't go through the right pass. But this is one of the traditions that has come, now it's normalized amongst today's navigators entering into the marae, the religious site of Taputapua'ata'oa. Taputapua'ata'oa is about governance, right? The people who control Taputapua'ata'oa are the ones who are controlling governance of all the islands. Right? So but it's also, it has a history that also involves a dark side of humanity, you know? And so there was a lot of sacrifice and a lot of the heaviness of that practice here at Taputapua'ata'oa. And there was also a huge cleansing and uplifting of this place as, I guess, as a beacon of cultural uplifting for not only Tahitian ma'ohi, but in recent years now, other Polynesians are having pilgrimages back, like Hawaii, to Taputapua'ata'oa. And it is lovingly cared for by the elders there. This is just a reminder that we have too many significant connections, but two of them with Tahiti is what is the pahu. Our entire pahu tradition, we believe through our traditions, come from Tahiti. And la'ama'ika hiki', and a whole epic stories of movement, bringing with them the drum. So this just shows, back in 1995, when there was a historic assembly of modern navigators led by Hokule'a there, we brought pahu'e'au to symbolize that important connection for us. And then here you have Viki Thompson, lovely uncle, Uncle Viki, we love and miss. And Mao, tavata'upu and ra'ya' young nainoa, behind standing, carrying a po'aku, which is another important tradition. It is believed that Taputapua'ata'oa, for many centuries of its existence, people would take stones and then bring them elsewhere to sort of ignite, if you will, new Taputapua'ata'oa. New religious sites with that name, Taputapua'ata'oa. And that was part of a governance strategy, if you will, but extremely sacred. So nowadays, when you hear people saying they take stones and they create other, back and forth as gifts, it might have its origin in this practice. And so these are the people who are reaching out to hava'i and saying, we welcome you, and we should be doing more things together, this should be normal, our coming back on this highway and interacting with our people. This is just a photo of Kamehameha Schools who has a partnership with Taputapua'ata'oa, but not all of Rai'atea, just Taputapua'ata'oa since 2018. And so this is just an example of coming together and sharing that aloha for each other. Just briefly share just about this he'e, right? Which is kind of a different concept of a map. So this could be seen as an indigenous framework for how to map important sites in the Pacific with the head of the he'e as hava'i, but the old hava'i, that is Rai'atea. And the hava'i up north is of course us, but we're younger. And there are many other hava'i, many of you will know, Salva'i and Sa'amoa and so forth, Hawaiki. And all these tentacles, these ave'ave', are like highways, they're roads. They're frequented with skill and precision and would gather like an alliance, if you will, at Taputapua'ata'oa. So these are documented traditions that are accepted independently from different extended families from the ends of the tentacles. And they align with the beliefs of the homeland. So it kind of reminds us that when we go to Tahiti, it could be a visitor, of a tourist, or which is fine because we always, you know, even our kupuna were tourists, right? They were visiting each other too. But it might be at this day and age also a kind of pilgrimage. You know, why we go, where we go, how we go, how we are when we go to places like Tahiti. So this is just kind of an imagine, you know, maybe there, this is a map with highways going everywhere to and from hava'i. And of course, that map, that roadmap would continue all the way. And we believe that through our Austro-Nesian linguistic, paleolinguistic knowledge, that much of our navigation technology originated in the vicinity of Taiwan. That's why you're hearing Taiwan a lot more than probably before because it's an acknowledged connection. And you'd have to, on another presentation, you can, we would talk more about how we think of Chinese in Taiwan. And really, that's just been for the last four centuries. And then the previous 6,000 years was indigenous Pacific island culture that figured out how to move from one island to the other. What NASA says is the greatest achievement of humankind, the peopling of the Pacific. So that's just a little bit of background of why everything is significant that we reach out and being reached out to by these amazing people in Rai'atea. I have a very, very brief video that I'd like to share. And then perhaps we could, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond to them. As you'll see, as examples of three different partnerships that are currently happening with Kamehameha Schools and Tahiti.
They're chatting and not, no more. And. Oh, yeah, no, yeah. That's, that's correct. It may be his video. No, no, just leave it. No, I'm good. No, turn, turn the video off. Yeah. See, it can appear? It's like they do to me all the time. You hold on, no science, who does it? Can we? Hold on. Hold on. Can I me?
Thank you for your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any. But I but I believe there are a couple of charter and agreements that the three mayors of Raya Teah would like to engage in with the Office of Wine Affairs. That's almost exactly to a separate one that they're doing with Kamehameha Schools. And Kamehameha sort of mentioned as a like a goodwill liaison just to help with that that relationship. But they're very, they're separate. And very much, and similar in content. Those two pieces, let me just put that back to to all of you today and allow me to answer questions if I can. Thank you again, Chair and Denzil. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. We do have questions from the trustees. Trustee Akina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Randy, I can't tell you how full my heart is when I saw you come into the room and that you shared your lesson in geography and culture. I felt I was back on Kapalama campus. And it was reminiscent of the the way Antonina Beamer taught us the Oli Aloha. That striking phrase in it. That's who we are. Thank you for reminding us. I have a question about the charter and agreement. Many such documents solemnize the relationship between parties across the world. There are sister cities, for example. Sometimes these documents just get put away into a folder. What kind of structure will we have? Committee, meetings, annual reminders? What type of structure will we have to ensure the ongoing value of the charter and agreement for OHA with Raya Teah municipalities? And the Kamehameha Schools?
That's a really good question. You know, when we began the consortium and decided that we were going to connect with declarations. Excuse me. When when we decided that Kamehameha was going to use declarations as as one way of connecting with partnerships in the Pacific. What we found was to create a partnership that was non transactional. And that it was based on our relationship, our kinship. So essentially, these are good, these are goodwill agreements. That that's based on who we are, the fact that we're related, that we live, we have the same origin in the Pacific. That's the basis for our doing more things together. It's very open ended. And what we found was that's when a lot of activity happened. When we tried to nail it down to specific, I'm going to do this by this date. You need to deliver on that by that date, which there's a need for in some situations. We found that we got a lot more mileage and a lot more, I guess, productivity in these in this agreement. By by formulating a kind of a loose, open ended type of agreement. And so what's happened to 2008, 2019, and today has there's, and of course, COVID hit in 2020. But even virtually, there have been numerous exchanges. Both culturally, educationally, we have professional exchanges. So I think I think maybe that would be one response to how do we keep it going? You kind of have to want to keep it going. You kind of want to, you kind of have to feel the excitement about it to keep it going. And I don't know how we've done 12 partnerships. I'm thinking that's pretty ambitious, you know. But really, one partnership can really be a bear. And yet all 12 of them are active, I think, because of that non transactional nature.
Justy Souza?
Mahalo Chair. Eh, mahalo, Grandi, for being here. Talking about relationships and partnerships. We go way back with my dad. He used to pull base for one of my mentors, Uncle Kavai Koke. Only to Kamehameha Schools, where we were fortunate enough to learn your compositions. I never been to Tahiti or Rarotonga, but you took me there every time, every time we sang our song and you were able to mentor us in that way. So I appreciate you very, very much. And thank you for keeping these relationships and committing to it. As we engage in a partnership, I'm all for it, absolutely. And not so much how we would benefit as OHA, but how we could contribute to this partnership. It's kind of what I want to know, how we can add to it. Maybe if you have some insight on how we can get that done.
Thank you.
Trusty Trask. Were you going to answer?
Can I respond to your question after, or even now? Yeah, well, we're just going to say.
Hold up, trustee Trask, he's going to answer the question.
I think you're you're asking about how do we, would we contribute? Yeah. You know, I I'll just share that one of the things that we found was very helpful in our educational issue was just to change the mindset, right? It wasn't so much the resources that we brought. It was reframing our understanding of who we are in the Pacific. That was huge. So we use different language and we use different images to describe who we are. And we kind of put away old language, which we respect and know had a time. But we no longer say things like our cousins of this Pacific. It kind of sounds like a throwaway line. We're kind of practicing different ways of describing our our relationship and our pursuit of being global. Yet we remind ourselves inherent in our identity is this globalness. You cannot help but not be inherently global when you consider our heritage, our voyaging heritage. So I think that a huge contribution would be changing the way we see Tahiti. And normalizing, so that's not an exotic destination. But this is actually our homeland. And so we, I would, I would suggest that that has worked for a lot of our, what we're doing is to focus on the changing of the mindset. One thought.
Trusty Trask. You're not muted. We cannot hear you, trustee.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thanks for that presentation, Randy. You know, I had some questions of you when I got the documents. I'm looking at exhibit B. Pages two stroke two and two stroke three. When I look at the article four there, it says here that we're going to cooperate and put together this this joint effort. I'm so happy to see it. I really support it. However, the second paragraph is referring to a special committee created for this purpose. When you, Randy, when you look at how OHA is structured, we have BAE and RM, believe it or not. We don't have a cultural committee, although I think our new chair will be creating one. Right now, we don't have it. And the reason why I'm asking you this is because I wanted you to know that we do have a protocol officer. That was trustee Keone Souza, who just spoke. We have a protocol officer. But we don't have a cultural body. And our protocol officer doesn't have any budget and never has. I'm raising this because your second point on exhibit B, page two stroke three at five, says that when we enter into the agreement, we are going to commit respective human and financial resources. We do not have a budget item in the current budget for this, trustees. So I want to make sure that when we move to implement this, our protocol officer has the jurisdiction here. We know who he is, but he can't do much until we give him a budget. And I would like to see that acted upon as soon as we pass this. We are going to pass this. I have no doubt we're going to pass it. What I want to make sure is that when we pass it, our protocol officer has the wherewithal to get the work done. So it's time to have more than one, a couple of committees for RM and BAE. Need to have something on this. And also, I want to put a flag here so that we come back and commit the financial resources that we're going to need. We haven't planned anything yet. But we know two things. We don't have a line item in our budget for it now. So what? We just go ahead and do it. But we do need to have the follow up. We sign this agreement. Our protocol officer, I'm happy, you know, I'm happy with the structure we have. But it's just a title. So now we need to take a look at our cultural committee somehow. And then the financial resources. We're signing this now. So we don't have it in the current budget. Let's get to action we need to do to support this. And let's take a look at and bring up soon a budget item so that our protocol officer and our cultural group can work on it. And as I'm pointing out, we don't really, we don't really have a cultural standing committee. We just have BAE and RM. Also, Randy, you have some sidebar agreements you just mentioned with Ohanas from Pacific. Can you send me a copy? I just wanted to see what, how they're handling it. And also, if you have some ideas, first, one or two projects. What might you be looking at? Because, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to structure something more for the office, but get the financial resources. When we sign this, we know. And we are going to back it up with our human and financial resources. I don't have a cultural committee to send it to, but I think that the time has come for our for our protocol trustee to have just that and the budget to go with it. So RM and BAE, you folks know, you folks review the budget, yeah? Maybe can follow up, but I'm happy to help.
Mahalo, trustee Trask will be sure to send examples of declarations to you. Thank you for requesting that.
Trustee Akaka?
Mahalo Nui for your presentation today and representing Hawaii with our cultural exchange. What I wanted to know is what the timeline would be? And what the next year, years going forward would look like?
Those are good questions, and I think they're they're related to the non transactional nature of this kind of goodwill agreements is that we get to determine them. But I would say that we know that there are some things on the horizon, for example. I think there's a lot of momentum generated from the Festival of the Pacific Arts. And people are interested in keeping that momentum going, those relationships. Another is Hokule'as Moana Nui Ake'a Voyage. As we know, she's doing an interstate, a statewide sale rather. And will be then returning to Tabutabua Teah next April, April 2025. And that's largely to a month after her 50th anniversary celebration. And the be in March 8. She's going to go with Hiki to Tabutabua Teah. And there's, and other Polynesian groups are going to come and celebrate those 50 years because people recognize it's a, it's a huge milestone. And then Hokule' will continue on to the Cook Islands, Samoa, American Samoa, Tonga, and Aotearoa. Again, with the momentum of the best pack of investments, if you will, that we've all made and invest pack. Those are now examples to to sort of capitalize on the relationships that we created. So just within this next year, that would be one example of what we could expect. Those are just opportunities to then figure out what kinds of ways that we'd like to to engage. Educationally, we also do a lot of virtual educational cultural exchange. Was so we connect with particular schools. And we, we do, we might have a climate or environmental summit with middle school with students in Yap, which is what we've done. Or with students in in Taiwan. So that's just one example of many different possibilities of the kinds of engagement. It's kind of really up to the heart of of the board as to where it would like to see and build relationships throughout the Pacific.
Trustee Galantia. Oh, go ahead.
I saw on the page three of three of the last page in our documents here, the an agreement for possible signing in 2024. Could you elaborate a little more on this?
So Mayor Thomas Motam, you saw him in the video. He's the mayor of Tabutabua Teah. He's kind of the the person sort of connecting everybody. And so the vision is that there would be sets of declarations or agreements connecting Hawaii, Rapanui, and Aotearoa. connecting Hawaii, Rapanui and Altearoa. So the different three apexes of the Polynesian Triangle. And, and so this, when OHA signs, if OHA signs and Kamameha Schools has and will sign a new one, will sort of represent the northern apex, Hawaii and the Polynesian Triangle. And I, I think in April 2025 at the Maraita Tapu Tapuataia, there'll be this affirming of the Polynesian Triangle as, as a, as a global entity, right? It's a global entity. So I think, I don't know if that gets to some of the, the wonderings you're, you might have about how this is materialized, right? So I think that's what we can look forward to is that particular alliance.
That's yet to be formulated in terms of when that would be sometime between now and the end of the year.
Yes, I think there's already, Rapanui's already signed on Mayor Petaro Edmonds. And I think there's a, there's a series of Altearoa parties that are also signing on. And so the, I think, I think it's almost done in terms of his vision of lifting up the Polynesian Triangle. So, yeah, that's one, one framework that's being moved forward.
I'm wondering how this would tie in as we had the Traditional Leaders Forum, that those conversations happening during the Festival of the Pacific and how this can tie in or how it has already tied in.
That's a really good question that it, it sounds like it's, it's meant to happen, a tie-in of some sort. They, they seem to lend to each other quite well. And I think the nature of, of things being open-ended is really helpful. There, there's not a lot of you must or here's our expectation. It's kind of, let's bring to it the possibilities that are there. So with the traditional leaders' effort, I mean, it feels like a real natural folding in of, of that effort. And, and this one, I think they, they seem rather compatible outside looking in. It seems rather compatible.
Justi Galutaria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Randy, good to see you, brother. This whole conversation brings a flood of great memories for me. Back in 94, 95, 96, I was a member of, and a member of the Board for the Polynesian Voyaging Society. So everything that you are speaking to today, I had a chance to live. And I recall, and this is basically, I mean, there's a question that, but I'm just indulge for me, if you, if you folks would. Because I was there when we entered Tiava Moa. And there was a prohibition on Va'akaulua for centuries to go into Tapu Tapuataia. So when we were planning the voyage, which we called No'namamo for the generations, and here we are a couple of generations later talking about it. It was really meaningful to be able to get the okay to go to the, through the Pass and into Tapu Tapuataia, which basically was the center of the, the universe, if you will. Politically, culturally, educationally wise, everything. And what is interesting that I want to point out to you folks was when we entered the Pass, there was a tahuna who was chanting from the shore. Or maybe he was maybe a couple of feet in, he was standing in the water and he was chanting us in. And a pod of nai'a accompanied, came right up to Hokulea and started to accompany us into, through the Pass. And then out of nowhere, it started to rain. And it was a sunny day, but all of a sudden, it started to rain, right, Randy? Because Randy then were on the shore welcoming us. And he's chanting, and the louder he chanted, the more rain came. And then he stopped and the rain stopped. This was surreal. It was unbelievable. So, you know, this is bringing up a full circle moment. Okay, so thank you for indulging me, you folks, because I'm feeling really good about this. I wanted to drill down a little bit, Randy, on the elements of the charter and the agreement. Because this is specific to OHA's engagement, okay? Cultural heritage, yes. Educational, yes. Community exchange, yes. Whenever we'd be traveling around the Pacific, I tried to get a sense of OHA's, what OHA stood for to the Polynesian leadership. And without a clear and precise definition, it appeared to me that the trustees themselves were, recognizes a house of nobles without us calling ourselves nobles, right? Would that still be true? And if it is, how do we maximize the political efforts of this particular initiative to further get into the, I guess, Polynesian bureaucracy chain? You know what I'm saying? You get what I'm saying? Yeah, I just wanted to ask you what your thoughts are.
I have an idea of what you're saying. I, I, I think it can be on one end, exciting, on the other end, very complicated.
Yeah.
Right? And, but what I think is that people are constantly looking to Hawaii for, for models of, of leadership. And we're always looking also to our Ohana for models of leadership. So there's kind of mutual interest in seeing the way in which we govern and the way in which we serve our respective peoples. My, my guess would be that if you were, if there were to be interchange and exchange regarding to leadership models and governance models and service models to, for Ma'ouhi, the native peoples, you would find counterparts there who would say, why, why haven't we been talking? Right? I, I think there's potential for that. We, we see that Altearoa all over the place, right? There's, there are all these kind of models and frameworks that are, that people are making happening in all sectors of society. So we, there's so much interchange, I think, with Altearoa as an example. Or English-speaking, I think that helps, right? But there's all this purposeful reach out of how are you guys doing that? How do we, how do we serve our people? How do we change legislation, et cetera? I think you could have those counterpart conversations in French Polynesia. They're, they're hungry for it. What's interesting is Raitaia has its own kind of, if you will, I think the native people would say, a kind of autonomy. Because it, it holds a certain place within the Tahitian worldview. And even though it's just one of many, a set of municipalities, because of its, its cultural stature, it is held in high regard. And so the politicians that end up being raised and groomed there in Raitaia end up being some of the most successful hardcore politicians, it has that kind of reputation. Rarotonga, they say, Aitutaki is the same thing. Your prime ministers are gonna come out of Aitutaki or places like that. They kind of have pegged where all of the, you know, the, sort of the hardcore leadership of their people are bred in different areas. I'm, I'm just sharing an example of a perspective of Raitaia folks saying, we need to have a counterpart of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs here. Or maybe we can share notes with how we manage our cultural patrimony, our cultural, you know, how, how we care for our UNESCO heritage site. Are there UNESCO heritage sites in Hawaii, should there be? You know, there are all those kind of wonderful conversations are, can happen, I think, just with an overture to, to the government.
A quick follow-up, Chair.
Okay.
So what you're seeing is, we, that's where we should go because it's not happening yet. Is that's your?
If that were, if that aligned with the goals of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, that would seem like a kind of a low-hanging fruit in many ways, because I think they're reaching out saying, would you like to exchange with us?
Yeah, and, and the step in is through the protocol.
I, I think it would always be through protocol.
Okay, got it.
And, and so doing, we, we start sharpening our protocol.
Sure, sure. And that's following up on what Justi Trask was mentioning too, and Justi Susan. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Stacy?
Mahalo Chair. Thank you, Dr. Fong, for your presentation. I just wanted to avail to the trustees that Hailema Fardin, our Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs, would be an appropriate, you know, support for this type of effort. He is Dr. Fong's contemporary and counterpart here at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, similar to what you're doing at Kamameha Schools. Hailema has proudly served the Office of Hawaiian Affairs in our, as our Chief Protocol Officer in Altearoa, Fiji, during the Festival of the Pacific, and continues to elevate the cultural capacity and competence of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. So we would continue to avail his expertise and just his, you know, his representation and leadership from OHA to these types of partnerships on behalf of the trustees. Mahalo.
Justi Souza?
Mahalo Chair. Mahalo Stacy, I was actually gonna say the same thing, so I have my hand up. But Mahalo, Justi Trask, you're absolutely correct. There, there needs to be a budget, but I believe, what Stacy said earlier, our Director of Cultural Affairs, Senior Director of Cultural Affairs, Hailema Fardin, I believe the budget lies within his department. And if there's more of a budget that needs to be approved, that comes to the Board, I believe, for certain engagements. And we'll continue to collaborate as we've done for Festpac, same thing. So mahalo. Thank you.
Any more questions from the trustees? Otherwise, I would ask staff to put the motion up on the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move to review and adopt a cultural heritage, education and community engaged, community exchange charter and agreement between Raitaia municipalities, French Polynesia and the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. The charter and agreement.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Justia Huna is excused. Justia Kaka? Too many microphones are on, can.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Justia Kina?
Aye.
Justia Lapa is excused. Justi Galutaria?
Aye.
Justi Souza? Justi Trask?
Aye.
Justi Waheee?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Aye.
Seven yes votes.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to authorize Chairperson Carmen Hulu Lindsey to sign the charter and agreement on behalf of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Is that a, I was gonna sign it anyway, but are you asking up for a motion?
Well, I see it as a proposed action, so yeah, it needs to be.
Oh, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
So sorry. Any discussion? Roll call.
Justia Huna is excused. Justia Kaka?
Aye.
Justia Kina?
Aye.
Justia Lapa is excused. Justi Galutaria?
Aye.
Justi Souza?
Aye.
Justi Trask?
Aye.
Justi Waheee?
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Thank you.
Randy, we'd like to thank you for the beautiful presentation and keeping us informed as to the interest in our South Pacific islands. Thank you for coming in physically. And we will continue to be close collaborators with the Kamameha Schools as we love and respect the mission of the schools, of course, to educate the future of our Lahui. Mahalo. Next on the agenda is community concerns. Who, do we have anyone signed up to speak under this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, our next Board of Trustees meeting will be on September 12th, but we do have, no. We do have an RM meeting tomorrow at 10:00 AM here in the boardroom. We were supposed to sign this memorandum of understanding on Thursday, but due to the weather, the plane of the Raitaia leaders have been diverted to Alaska. So it's postponed for now until it's rescheduled, the signing, the actual signing. So we'll be notified, I believe, when they reset that date. And it'll probably be the same date as Kamameha Schools, because they are chartering their own plane. We don't have a date yet. So if there's nothing else, I'll entertain an adjournment?
It's a move, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Justia Huna is excused. Justia Kaka?
Aye.
Justia Kina?
Aye.
Justia Lapa is excused. Justi Galutaria?
Aye.
Justi Souza? Justi Trask?
Aye.
Justi Waheee?
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
We have seven yes. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.